Okay, hello.
Um.
Do you?
Molly not here.
Do you want me to kick it off?
Because if Molly's not here, you're the vice mayor.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You you just hit the inside.
We're starting.
Okay, no idea what I'm doing. All right. You need to call the order?
Yep.
Okay.
Then you do a roll call?
Roll call. Um. Josh. Is that my?
Uh typically you go in alphabetical, but it's okay. Um.
Nancy, Dan.
Here.
Do I have to say last name?
Um, oh, it's okay.
And then how do I say Molly?
You just say Molly and then absent. Yeah.
Here. Casey.
Kerrigan.
Here. And.
Press on. Uh. Can you just ask us if we agree to the agenda?
Do uh we all agree to the agenda? Does anybody see?
There we go.
I make emotionally approved this, but.
Okay.
So moved.
Alright.
You could do a voice vote on this instead of a roll call.
Oh, who is that?
Yeah, so.
Who's in favor of bringing me to the?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then.
Yes.
I.
I.
One, two, three.
Wait, you should say this. I.
I.
Oh, I.
Anybody? You should teach us about tomorrow and I'm doing.
Yeah, I must also do something.
Have to call it a grand agenda. Okay, and then we report on relevant action by the town council.
Are you wanting to speak at this point?
Yeah, I'll.
Thank you so much.
I said it was. Wasn't. Well, those teams. Congratulations. Follow me.
Yeah.
As chairman of the body, so. I think you made a good choice. You should do a good job. The order is to welcome Nancy on board. I remember now. Uh, I mean Nancy's got so much knowledge about the history of planning person and that have been there. We haven't worked with planning commissions. It's an excellent choice. It's just true she could have laid. Wish for the candidate to choose well. So, anyhow, um. I'll always at your disposal if you need anything, um. I know some of the history of the town too, and uh. Here you can do others where she is.
You're in already.
Hello.
I'm always always welcome to congratulate you on this.
Wonder if anything's so much. I do apologize, but.
Keep in mind, and I think Nancy. Before your term is over, you may be there some one on the village.
Well, I'm quite certain we will be.
So.
Yeah.
Are you ready to watch your list or not?
Uh huh, you too. Just want to. I'm not Nancy. We all agree.
I'm part of the power source. Great responsibility, so. Again, thank all of you for your service to the town. We have all of you like we've uh. We've uh. You're all great, sweetie.
Oh, thank you. That's a nice of you to say.
I'll call any time you need.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Stay on. Don't get your own devices.
We may, we may take you up on that. Come and help us.
Good. I don't mind. I was chairman of the little thing one time too, so.
I know.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron. Have a good night.
A couple other things to follow up on there. When we. Thankfully chose Nancy. We had a bit of a spirited conversation.
Yeah.
Part of the. Differing views on the council had to do with. Whether we should accept. The recommendation of the planning commission. Which seems. Rather odd, but that was, there were some sentiment on the council that was.
There was some confusion too about whether we were even involved in the process, but I think it was. Finally agreed on that we did have that responsibility. So.
Yes, it was a, it was an interesting conversation that we've had about.
Well, it's kind of why I said to Ron, you too. Because he's been, he's been kind of set up to be the tyrant. Been been some things.
So. That is, that is. That is correct. Yes.
Thank you for telling us about that. I know it was a kind of a split decision there, but.
Well.
Split too.
We are.
Tell them. I thought it was. Closer than that.
We are the. Beneficiary of of having this. Very good. And we talked about the. Salary issue. In private session. And then we also. Talked about. The virtual. Issue we had last time hoping not to have it again. I think you've. Followed up on there, so.
What kind of virtual issue?
The one we had last month, we had.
Oh.
We talked about it as we, well, we had it as a. Planning commission, and then we talked about it there.
Yes, that was fairly interesting. To say the least, but it was serious. Welcome back.
Back to Elizabeth, part of it had to do with VPNs, even right now. Lincoln is out there, so her 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 luck, she's reluctant to allow the pump it's.
Well, he he was saying that he wasn't going to be available.
A lot of.
Thank you.
And what do you do this?
What's great?
Oh, up here it is. No, we can't.
I'm here. Hi.
Unless someone was sitting over here and do this, can you do that? Will you guys carry on? I'll just um see if I even try to do it. Yeah, what? I was trying to, we were trying to figure that out today and um. You're not able to do that.
And I think it was easy to kind of um settle on the VPN. I don't know if there have been any kind of conclusions. I know that. Admiral even had some trouble right after that, and I was like, oh, is that connected in any way? But it was, I mean, it's pretty easy to make that. Connection with the VPN and everything, but UVA's VPN seems to work for him, okay, so.
Yeah, just some of the research that I've done after that was to lock down a meeting was undone, so not allowing anybody else. Yeah, but in this instance. I think someone got ones at his. Account or something like that.
Tonight?
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
Before. So then it was also suggested to me as part of the security um to help prevent this is to. Change the um codes and then make people like they have to provide. The information, their name or phone number, whatever, not letting them use pseudonyms.
Yeah, yeah.
But then all that, you know, have, we have to make sure that it's for ADA compliant.
Yeah, yeah.
With void and everything.
Right, sure. I'm not. People.
Okay, so that's all I.
That's, and that's why I'm reporting.
Okay, so he won't be able to join us?
He's here. He is here.
Okay.
We can't, our. Nancy's working on that.
Just can't move with this since because I'm not. I'm not a PC officer. You didn't? You can tell me. What it was all about so that I can do my homework.
Do that, maybe.
So I'll just tell you all while we're working on this, if that's okay, I'll just. Is that okay? Or would you rather concentrate?
No.
On that, okay.
You.
You're the chair.
I am.
I'm getting the chair.
Call the order.
Yeah.
I would have had to call. Oh, you should have. I'm so sorry. But didn't you feel powerful, vice mayor?
No.
Not mayor, vice planning commissioner.
Excellent.
Well, I really do apologize about that. I've had quite a day. It's very exciting.
Now, we can change that. We have said you were absent. That goes, you're present, right?
Oh, wait, wait, that.
It it's one of those automatic things. Yeah.
Okay. And Melanie is going to translate.
There's a minute.
All this.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so. Casey just turned to me and said, I read this kind of cover. And I love that she did that. I I learned her the book because I thought it would be something for her to look at. And maybe get some ideas from, and do you feel good about what was written here?
Yeah.
All right, so um.
This is.
Answer questions of this is one. No, you don't. This is one. Right? I will definitely give you after. So this is one of three books that I will be studying for um the CPC program. It is the Certified Planning Commissioner um Program that they run at VCU through the land use program. It's like L U E P, I think. I don't know what the E is off the top of my head, but um. Anyway, I had a really great start to last week because I went to Richmond on Monday and Tuesday. To meet with the group and get some. There were a couple of lectures and really great people, amazingly. Knowledgeable about all of that, and so I think I'm in good hands with that. Um, I think that, you know, I told them that I thought it would be a really. Great thing for somebody who had been involved in the planning commission for a little bit and then go. Um, it's a lot to kind of absorb in the beginning, but after that. I will have the books once I'm done with it, and you guys could study too if you want, especially you. My special.
Just turns to him, especially.
Yes, especially you.
What other, may I ask what the other um books are?
Yes, there is the um. The Comprehensive Plan is the name of the book. And then the other one is called. The. Planning Commissioners Guide or something like that. So I will be reading. Um. You know, like a hundred pages a week. It's not a huge commitment, but um. And just kind of checking in and saying, you know, things are going well, that kind of thing. I think there. I might have to write a paper, you know, the usual, so um this week was the first week.
No, this is.
Then it's too long.
But the comprehensive plan, how is it? I think it's awesome. Short or?
Um, it's pretty big, but I'll give it to you as soon as I'm done. Because I know you're gonna take all the halogens, but it's really good.
Good for our comprehensive plan.
And I think it's also good to talk about some of the things that we're responsible for. Um. You know, one of the things being like the um. The Capital Improvement Plan. You know, we should be reviewing that and we should be reconciling that to our comp plan and things of that nature, so. Um, it's interesting to have them talking to you about things you should be checking on. Um, and. So I felt really energized by that. I really wanna um be the best I can be, and I guess is what I'm saying, and and so this will be. What I'm doing.
That's great.
All right.
That's really.
Yeah, definitely skip in line with the agenda. I didn't even. I. But anyway, um, it was a a really great start to that, and I will share more. Once I'm kind of in it, uh, I think planning smart, I'll be fully in it and can. Also report on it at that point in time. So if you wouldn't mind, just look that up on the agenda again. That'd be great. But um, yeah, and you guys let me know if you have any questions. Not that I know everything now, but. I can certainly. I have the resources left, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
You were just there.
Number three.
You just first, so.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any matters from the public? Are we on with just um? Lincoln?
Uh, yes, Lincoln is on, and he can hear us.
And are there other people on as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, no matters from the public?
Yep.
Thank you.
All business.
Comp plan. Hey, Lincoln.
Hello, hi, everyone. How are you? Yeah.
We're good. We're um.
Okay.
We're here. We're gonna do stuff with the um volume so that we can see whether we can hear you. Let's see.
Is that better now?
Not wait.
Oh, it, I don't think it's you, Lincoln. Give us one sec.
Okay.
Here's a queen when that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like it. Okay, now.
Yes, hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Oh. I can hear you, but it's very low.
Will it not go up anymore on that?
We'll look and see. Josh.
Hello.
Do you know?
Can you hear me now?
Me on a PC.
Uh, I can. Give me a truck. Hey, Lincoln.
Hi, hello. You hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, thank.
Okay.
I'm glad you could join us.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to mention, uh, last meeting, I I wasn't on the VPN to start with. Uh, I only went on the VPN. Through UVA after uh we had the the Zoom bombing, so I don't think that was the the start of it. I think it was the public meeting link on the website. That's probably. What it could be, yeah, just to just to mention that, yeah. Okay, um, well, I can't see you now, but I'll just start off. Um, so first off, um, you know, I sent to you earlier today, uh, the finalized transportation plan. So that's what we discussed uh last month. And uh what I did, I uh went in and updated the car parks, the vehicle charging, um, did a general edit. And then I send that on to Elizabeth, so um I think it's ready to send to VDOT. And uh. In in my opinion, and then then basically they have ninety days to reply the town with any comments. I don't uh suspect a large number of comments are in the document. But uh generally speaking, I I wrote the document and we've gone through several times. You know, I I structured it to really explain what a transportation plan is. And uh what's required, and I I structured it just what the code of Virginia requires. Um, and fill that out based on the what the town has. So um if you have any questions, glad to. Explain, and also if VDOT wants to have a call, Elizabeth, I'd be glad to join. I'll I'll actually be in Charlottesville on the twenty ninth and thirtieth, so. That could also be a a great time to have a meeting if that's the case.
Yeah, let's find one.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, hold on just a second. What days of of the week are the twenty ninth and thirtieths?
Well, the Friday, the twenty ninth, I have a meeting at UVA in the afternoon.
Okay.
Since that way you do.
It's uh Saturday, wait, no, Friday and Saturday. Yeah. So, um. I think we will definitely be working through email. I think it would be good to meet, but I don't know if all of us can be available. Are you, any of you available? Like, what about Friday night?
Uh, yeah, that's a possibility. Yeah, Friday night, yeah.
Or pizza, sorry.
Or Thursday. Thursday, I could also come into town a day earlier. Yeah, we can, we can talk offline about it, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. If we need to um schedule anything, we'll do that then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But the importance of the 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 transportation plan, just to mention one more time, you know, uh Charlottesville had a lot of trouble with their uh transportation plan, and they didn't. Properly consult a VDOT, some people say, and that was one of the reasons they they had a lawsuit, and um then they had some technicalities with the lawsuit, and then their. Their their um their planning parameters were basically nullified for a while, so we just want to cross all the Ts and dot the Is. Um, so that's, this is one step in that process, yeah.
So tell me about this. Was VDOT suing the town? I mean, the county?
Oh, no, it was just a um a a developer or a group of individuals that did not agree with the uh the current planning parameters.
Okay.
Uh, they they were, they were looking for um. You know, different aspects, uh different technicalities that that did not comply perhaps with uh the code of Virginia.
I got you.
So uh. In their opinion, that's why they filed the lawsuit, but I'm just recapping what I I I read on the news from Charlottesville today, or you know, so on and so forth, yeah.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. Okay.
Yeah, so that's the transportation plan.
Mm hmm, great. And that's part of the comp plan. It will be part of the comp plan?
Yeah, so so um that really has uh a lot of ties to some of our goals, like build out infrastructure. So the transportation plan is all about. The plant, that the town really looking forward in the future and talking about its deficiencies in terms of infrastructure and where it wants to invest money. So the the plan basically makes uh two recommendations. Um, if you recall from from last month, we discussed those, but I'll just give a brief overview. Prioritize the development, improve uh sidewalks and trails. Um, and then improve the safety and capacity of key intersections.
Right, and that makes so important for the. People of the town within the transportation plan or within the, oh, the infrastructure. Um.
Main mainly, I think what we've been discussing is um. Currently, there's already some uh issues with some intersections. Uh, for instance, uh right outside Nancy's house, you know, there's the rise in the road and the, you know, people turning into tiger fuel. There's the tree, so on and so forth. Um, so that's just one example. Yeah.
So.
So that's, I actually wrote the tree and the transport plan as one example of um mitigating factor, but um.
But that's right.
If if northeast area of town grows, if if um if southern development actually, you know. Starts to develop their land, um, those in, those inter intersections will likely be very strained. So um the transportation plan really looks a little bit forward, and it also communicates to VDOT in the county. That, hey, w- we may have some issues with these intersections in the future. So it's really a communication tool, but also um. A a tool the the town can, of course, use to plan, yeah.
Yes, oh, definitely, yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, so then the the next item is Molly and I had a a conversation uh about her build out infrastructure section, so the the thank, thank you, Molly. We we talked for about an hour and a half. Was it about ten days ago or two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Um. But I I I can't quite find your text in the document, so maybe we can talk offline.
Yeah, let's do, because I put that into the working document.
Okay.
I don't know why it didn't take, but I can redo that really easily.
Okay, we can, we can talk in the next few days.
Okay, thanks.
Um. So. So. My 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 task at hand is to really uh edit um Molly's final text. And then I also need to edit Lisa's text. Uh, Lisa, um, you know, departed the planning commission. She has some. Some texts I need to fill in the blanks a little bit, so those are, those are my my two uh next tasks. So that's what I. I hope to have done by by the next meeting, by by when I'm in town, yeah. That's my plan, and and Molly will will also communicate on the photographs uh to to go into the the document. I I see that you did add a few photographs, yeah.
I did.
So much like.
Yeah, it's all, it's all written up with like what page everything's on. I just haven't put them all in there, so I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. So that's, that's um what I have to talk about, but I also am ready to talk about Nancy's um proposed agenda item about easements, because we already have a nice section in the. In the comp plan written up, so glad to contribute to that part of the discussion too, yeah.
That's awesome. So. Nancy and um Casey got together over the last couple of weeks and have been talking a lot about um. Conservation easements, and I think they've got some great ideas, so.
Or or other ideas, Lincoln, because we, you know, we talk about the um. If if, because we we still have to do a zoning map, right? We still have, we, as part of the comprehensive plan, we really need to. Have a map, right?
The um.
We have. A future use map. We need a future use map. No, we don't have a future use.
No. Do we have a future?
We have a current use map.
Um. We're.
Correct, we have a a current use map and a map from uh the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan that was future at that point.
Oh, yeah, but the it's current. Well, is it current now or?
It's, well, technically, it's still the the future use map. Um. But we found some discrepancies between that and uh, you know, what's going on in town actually right now, so. Um, and then basically what had happened, just to recap previous uh conversation a while ago, um, the town. Council and planning commission had made some decisions over time. However, those decisions were never captured in the current land use plan. So Lawless left us with a a list of those those um items.
Uh huh.
So I have, I have that list. Um, so. So basically. Jack, Jack tried to uh update the the plan. Um, so we um. We still were having conversations, so I'm gonna try a different method, basically, yeah. Don't know if Jack's there, but uh.
No, he's not here tonight. Um, I actually talked to him also, and um. Yeah, found that there were some things that needed to be expressly discussed with him, and I will try to do that again.
Okay.
But did you want me to try working on it?
Uh, no, maybe try, I try from this end. Um.
Okay.
Try a different method, yeah, on my end, that I'm able to do myself, and I I will um do, but basically I'll take the old um. Sorry, let me rephrase. I'll take the current land use uh map. Make the necessary updates, so it's it's um, it realizes all the previous decisions that that uh Lawless mentioned. And then we can convert it into the future land use map. Um, so. In terms of the future land use map, there's just a few decisions to be made. Um. And I see your your question, um, Elizabeth in the chat, I'll 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 email everyone the the map uh with the comments on it. Um, but but basically, um. It's a question of whether we want to upzone the town or we want to keep the zoning the same, because if it, if the zoning stays the same. A developer like, uh, for instance, uh. That owns land in the northeast of town will want to come in with proffers, and I know last month we talked about proffers, so. It might be a very low density, like uh village residential is is common throughout the town, and it's it's very low density, but they want to build a higher density, so then they offer proffers. Which are um, you know, benefits to the town in exchange for higher density. Um. The problem is if you offer higher density to the start with, um. Then uh proffers are less likely, um, so on and so forth. So you might be learning this in your class, um, Molly, so just to fill you in.
I keep saying, we know we're gonna talk about proffers.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the town cannot ask for proffers, as I mentioned last month. Um, that's illegal, yeah.
Yeah.
The the issue is you, we just have to pick the current, the the right zoning density, and uh my opinion basically is to leave the density how it is. And let uh developers make proposals that best suits them, their their agendas and the town's agendas, of course.
Are they likely, they're likely to put those in, you know, like, they're likely to. Kind of try and bargain with us, right?
Yeah, uh, it's likely because village residential is not very dense. Um. So, um, yeah, that that'd be my my suggestion, so I I'll I'll basically just update the current plan to make it truly current, capturing those lawless items. Um, no pun intended on lawless items.
Yes.
But. Um.
Mr. Lawless.
Then then we, then we talk hopefully next month on, uh, if there's any uh other amendments, uh, the planning commission would want to make in terms of future land use planning. Um. So that 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 could be a good agenda item, yeah.
We've got a question here. So.
Go for it.
I wanted to talk about easements. Is the sand land may. Put their property into a conservation easement. Now. Does the town, I don't even know, if in our ordinance, if there's a zoning, we have the capability to do that. I know that um through Virginia Outdoors, they did an easement over by the tire plant. And the town took over that easement. And the town took over that easement. So Bert got eighty-five thousand dollars and we got, you know, swampy. So what I'm asking, is it beneficial for us to put a concept of easements into the new comp plan?
Well, that's a good question, uh, but I, I do remember previous conversations that the town has had different forms of easements, whether it be access to the Van Cleef Nature Area. I mean, maybe Dan, does that ring a bell?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That was more of a legal one. This is more of a conservation one.
Conservation one.
On conservation. That was one where we actually had to go and fight to get that. Not a right of way, but similar. Yes, yeah.
I mean, maybe Mr. Bowling would be the best place to, to advise on this, but it would seem that if, if the town is able to make uh, one type of easement, it's able to make a different type of easement, but um, he would probably be best suited to advise, yeah.
But so, but okay, my understanding from this book, is that conservation easement is um, uh, so it's voluntary, so whoever owns it, but it can be a private owner, it can be a public entity as well. It can be, it doesn't matter who owns it. It, it can, it's still a conserva- it can be a conservation easement. And then it's interesting, their conservation easement, that it doesn't necessarily have to be for public use. Where I think we do, we really do wanna have public use, right? I mean, for, you know, the trails and all that. So maybe we want something a little more specified. And if we can do that, then just a conservation, I mean, we'd like trails, we would like, um.
Well, the conservation department would allow that.
It would la- allow it, but we need to be more.
Because if the conservation easement, say, let's just say Southern says, okay, all of the riparian buffer, on all of the waterway ways on that ninety acres. We're gonna put that into a conservation easement and the town of Scottsville will hold the ease. That's what happens over here with um, Dr. Bert.
Okay.
With the. So I think what we have to, I think what you're asking, is it public land? Do we actually zone it as public? Because I think we do have that capability, don't we? In our current zone.
Is that for, for, in our future use? We could put that in our future use map?
In the comp plan, yeah.
Comp plan.
Absolutely. And it's good to encourage people uh, outside of the town to do conservation easements. It could be an educational kind of and beneficial thing to put out there, but yeah. Um, if you're talking about just the, the east village, then. We should, I, I think we should have like a future planning map out where Casey, you found in the state code, where we could adopt conservation easements.
Well, it's just like, it's just a zone, like it's.
So I think we need to maybe look at a map with all the waterways and where the bad places are. And put in where we would like green space and which would bring trails. And I, and I so, one of the reasons I'm pushing this is Ryan Deanna, the Ryan Deanna Trail System, Charlotte'sville and Albemarle ran into some problems because they, it had to go through people's property and it was enough. So this way, we're ahead of the game, we get everything in place and the developers on board. And we don't have to face like, um, I thought I'd be here in twenty, thirty years, thirty or forty.
Well, that's just.
So this is something we've been working on since two thousand six, before a dam came on. And I would like to see us do something and put something to paper that we can then. I think you're right. And I also wanna ask both of you or all of you, has anybody seen or made a plan for trails in this area that we might be able to?
No one's made a plan.
Oh, did you? You left red cross.
Southern, they allowed us to, uh, Nancy and I to walk through. So we've walked those trails, so we've made, we kinda have an idea where, you know, where there should be trails.
Well, I think it might be beneficial for us, and I don't know whether you all feel confident tr- uh, tackling that, or if we need to have somebody come in and do that. But I think it would be important to have a plan.
I mean, Elizabeth, with your background, they. We could, I think we can do so much. No, well, no, but, but I think the first thing, we, we're trying to get, we need uh, an overlay map or something, an overlay.
Yeah.
Uh, that shows exactly where all the, you know, riparian buffers and all that.
Just to mention, um, Mr. Lawless, right before he uh, departed the town, you know, he was an avid jogger and hiker, so he uh, went out on all these trails and uh, took his smartwatch or some other device and tracked the GPS points. But um, he had trouble exporting the data to a file that, that we could use for mapping. Um, but I, I also have a GPS device um, that I could bring with me when I come to, to uh, Albemarle County. If someone's interested in walking around multiple times, yeah.
We could probably. One of those programs does show the, you know, where you've been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the main thing is if we can export the, the um, the GPS data points to a editable file, then that can be used in GIS or other programs. So we can actually put it, superimpose it on the map as an overlay or, or such, yeah.
Yeah, what about that guy? The guy that uh, did that map? You know, that one.
His second map, but they swapped.
Oh, because the GIS has.
But I will contact him again, because I would like to have like one with. So thinking we can get huge maps from the county, they're like thirty dollars, full color or black and white, that we can start playing with.
I think that's great. We've needed some map to refer.
I know we don't, we don't get the GPS data, but.
So, so two things that we, we discussed previously, um, so that the challenge with the easements is, you know, I, I think the town has various easements, uh, um, whether it be utility easements that are, that are controlled by the utilities, like the sewer line that runs uh, through the northeast part of town that a lot of people hike along, right? Um, and various other types of easements, and I think creating a map or kind of an inventory of these easements is, is a first step. But also, the, the second step might be uh, making known intentions. So if, if the town is looking to connect point A to B to C, and landowners knew about that and, and, and got on board, then the easements um, could start to come a lot easier uh, in the long term, right? Everyone kind of has to be on board. Yeah, go ahead Molly, yeah.
And am I correct in assuming, I'm just assuming at this point in time, that um, if we put these easements in place, that people who are buying these uh, properties up in East Village would be aware of that, or is it really separate from the building?
Well, component, because those easements would be in East Village. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
A lot of times I think people don't realize when they see easements on whatever flat they're buying, like what that means, because when I looked at VDOT, that happened all the time.
Yeah, sure.
People would like put up a really nice fence and then VDOT would come along and be like, what, that's a real easement, what do you do or, you know?
Yeah.
And, and utility that happened also when I was in Abidin, that there was a utility easement that was on everybody's flats and there was no development for fifteen or seventeen years and then the developer decided to develop all the land up and uphill and they came in and that was like forty feet wide in people's yards.
Yeah. Well, good, it's separate, so right now.
You know, I mean, it's, they would purchase the property and if you have an easement, the easements run with the land. Right? I mean, tell me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Virginia Outdoors Fund, the conservation easements, um, it doesn't have to be a riparian buffer, it doesn't have to have stream. You could like the sandlands, you could decide, you know what?
Yeah.
Donate the whole thing and put it in a conservation easement, so. You know, taxes. I mean, the benefits, you know, people benefit from it if you open it up to everybody, right? Like somebody who was about public or private, it's, you don't have to open it up. If it's your own land and you have whatever and you wanna put it in a conservation easement, then you get tax benefits. You know?
And you still basically, it's a, it's a conservation easement, you still own the property.
Yes.
It's a, a different entity owns the easement. And the, why I like the book, like even thinking about, when talking about conservation easements, it's a carrot to developers, because they could actually get money for putting it into an easement. That's.
But you just have to be careful that they don't give you all this like free land, they give you some underneath the power line.
And, and also, Lincoln, didn't we, we talked about um, like, maybe that's not, like we would like Southern to do more than just, you know, if we just have a conservation easement, maybe I mean, we would love for some commitment to actually maintaining the trails.
Yeah.
Maintaining them.
We also have written in the comp plan the, the issue of maintenance, because the town doesn't wanna take on more responsibilities, because it can't even maintain some of the um, you know, trails it already has. So that, that's a delicate item and, you know, those maintenance requirements uh, sh- should ideally be baked into the the conservation easement if that's possible, but of course, the town lawyer would have to advise all the technicalities, yeah. But um, the, the main intention of the comp plan again is a shopping list for potential uh, developers or others that want to assist the town. So that's why um, if we're able to put in a very detailed shopping list, um, then uh, people can take a look at that and, and look what, what's best for, for both parties, yeah. So I agree, the GPS uh, tracking is, is ideal, so then we can find out where uh, these trails are exactly, some, because some of them are na- natural trails and some of, like animal trails and some of them are hiking trails, so. Uh, and, and I think Lawless wanted to basically superimpose those trails on the, the different properties in the northeast part of town and find out the optimal uh, orientation of these potential easements or other, other types of uh, ways that the, the town can better connect itself, yeah. So I think it's all a great, a great idea.
Was it, was Javier able to find that information, or do you know if that information exists?
Well, there's a drawing in the back uh, right corner of the room. You can, you can see at the, the drawing table over there, to your, the back right. Your back right. I'm probably pointing the other way, but anyway. There's uh, I guess it's uh, like a twenty-four by thirty-six drawing where Lawless drew out his intentions for these easements. On a, a submission that, that basically uh, Southern did long ago, um, based on kind of like a suburban plan. Um, like the, you know, lowest density, just to get a plan in, in the door, um. And that's what he kinda sketched on, so it should be still back there. There, there was a lot of other uh, historical things kinda piled back there last time I was in the o- in, in the office. But it should be back there, yeah.
There's lots of, there's way a bit under there. I think that'd be hard for us to find it right now.
I might have a photograph of it, but I'd really have to dig back, yeah.
No, not the color, it's, it's like, um.
It's a Southern development. Oh, the sheets.
Yeah. I mean, we could look at it another time. I'm not worried about that. Um, are we, would you like to see it?
I've seen.
But it would be nice to see it, like, like.
We love.
How about all these maps, like get the overlay, you know, let's, let's see where all the, the river streams, whatever.
Yeah.
Ripping buffers, let's see where they all are. Let's see where the, maybe put our trails on it. Um, yeah.
So the other important thing I'll just mention if I could, um, is the issue of the riparian buffers and other environmental regulations, because um, you might uh, remember a discussion, uh, I recommend, recommended to Javier to really focus on uh, looking into how the counties uh, rules and regulations uh, mainly cover riparian buffers for the town, uh, whether they do or they don't, because you know, the, the town does its own planning, right? Hence the, the Scottsville Planning Commission. But it's unclear if the, the county riparian buffers uh, regulation applies in the town. And all these, there's the state level environmental regulations, but it's, it's unclear if the county level environmental regulations are, are in effect in the town, yeah. And the town hasn't really had significant development in a riparian uh, area. For instance, the gas station wasn't really in a riparian area, um, so that wasn't really challenged. Uh, Bird Street wasn't really in a riparian uh, buffer area. But the northeast part of the town uh, near some of these creeks and streams would be in that area. So um, you, I can, I can forward the, the county's riparian buffer website. They, I remember they have a, a website and they even have a person in charge. But I don't think Javier e- ever got to the point to really driving down to the, the details of if someone submits a plan with a large riparian buffer uh, aspects, would the county regulations kick in, or would it be the town's responsibility to have regulations? So the town, um, to my memory of our previous conversation, doesn't have any riparian buffer uh, regulations. Or slope protection, so on and so forth, yeah.
You don't have them, I mean, I would.
Yeah.
I think it's imperative we'll do that.
Well, I do think so too, and I think that, isn't it mostly that Albemarle is a guide for us? And not?
Historically, yeah, the, the town's um, uh, regulations were all copied from Albemarle County. Albemarle County has generally evolved over time, uh, but Scottsville has, has updated their regulations at perhaps a slower pace, yeah.
Well, we'll check in with them. I don't know what they would say. Be like, oh, yes, you have to do our regulations. I don't know.
Well, our work would be based upon federal. Yes.
Yeah, right.
Or for discharge elimination system, which Virginia uses the VP DKS. For stormwater and erosion control.
You seem well versed in this topic. Eighteen years. Well, I'm so glad you're here.
Yeah.
Yes. So.
So here, here's the riparian buffer website for the county, um. And I remember, yes, the, the contact is, is Frank, um. So more details are, are here, yeah.
Thank you.
It's Frank.
Frank.
Frank Poole, yeah.
Down there and talk to Frank.
And again, um, Elizabeth, we, I don't think Javier had the chance to really drive down to the details, but if you're knowledgeable in this area and, and have the bandwidth, that'd be I think really valuable and tremendous for the town in the long run.
Yeah, I think Lincoln's getting to that burnt out stage.
Yeah, we, uh, we'll try to keep going.
Are you defending your dissertation soon, or is that the spring?
Oh, that's not until next uh, March or April, hopefully.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
We're all coming, by the way.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, that's, that's ideally where it'll be, uh, that'd be the best room, yeah.
That's great. You'll get the low, lower east oval. It'll be great.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that everyone's excited about easements. I think this is a, a great thing, yeah, so.
I think it's a great thing too, but I do, I really want to kind of encourage everyone and maybe just kind of put it out there. You know, in my free time, I'm gonna try and do my newsletter and start up the um, contact information through. We had been working on having some sort of mechanism on the town site that said, would you like to, you know. Have information from our newsletter or whatever, and so people sign up for that, and that's a way for us to contact them. With, um, event information, what's going on on the town council, um. Did you know that you could have a conservation easement, you know, that kind of thing?
Right.
So, um, yeah, that's definitely in the works, but, um, I have to just get that mechanism on the, the website. So.
So, one other thing, uh, Elizabeth, I saw that you, you dropped a question in the, in the chat, uh. Is the new housing development included in the info of the, of the plan? Well, in the comp plan, we talk about, um, the three large different parcels that are in the northeast, we've got the existing Me- Mink Creek. Estates, and then the two other parcels that are kind of on opposite sides of the water tower. Um, so we, we mentioned that those are potential areas for development, because, you know, for instance, the town doesn't know for sure when, when that would happen, but, um. You know, we, we talked about in the transportation plan is, those would be the growth areas, so on and so forth, but we also talk about, um, the, the, the land around Tiger Fuel, there's still. Uh, some land that, um, the Tiger Companies own, right, that could be developed. Uh, that's yellow on the land use plan, and we also mentioned about the, um, the, the tire factory, I mean, that could. Could be another proposal that comes up in the future, too, so, these are all parcels that we talk about in the, in the comp plan and also the transportation plan that. Could drive development, and because of those parcels, that's why we, uh, adjusted the proj- projection for the population in the town. I think it's, uh, eight hundred fifty and then nine hundred, uh, in the, in the coming, uh, decades. That, that's in the transportation plan, too, if you wanna take a look, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering how that, making sure it was captured because of the added traffic, but.
Well, the, the previous three or four complans have had the target of a thousand, uh, residents, uh, in the next ten or twenty years. But that never reached fruition, um, however, I truly do believe with these potential parcels. The, the town could reach, uh, eight hundred fifty or nine hundred, wha- whatever it was that we, uh, we, we decided to target recently.
Yep, I agree. It's a more reasonable number, and certainly, uh, doable now that we will have some development coming here. Um, I actually met someone today who was looking at. Um, Scottsville as a place to, to be and kind of asked me some questions and then said. Could you do me a favor and just not let it be like Prose? And I said, I just don't wanna have this conversation with you right now. I know, and we're certainly not connected to, um, Charlottesville. Um, but, yeah, I told her that we would do our very best, and I think that that's. Not even close to what we planned to do, but important to remember that that's what everyone is afraid of, you know. And so.
So on the screen is the, the population projection that we discussed, um, so you'll see Town of Scottsville, five hundred twenty-four as of the last census. Then the Albemarle County, Flavana, Buckingham and, um, State of Virginia, uh, population figures. And then the growth, uh, highlight for those other areas is based on the Weldon Cooper Center at UVA. And then the ta- Town of Scottsville growth is based on, uh, our own projections, so six hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, yeah.
We made it very.
So this is in the transportation, transportation plan, so this is communicating the intention of growth to V dot, but also in our comp plan itself.
Yeah, so, but that's not Prose. It's not, you're right, absolutely, just keep in your mind that people are worried about that happening. And we'll let them know that three parcels of land is not going to be what that is. Especially with all our conservation easements, you know. I know. I think it's very important, I do think it's important, I think we're. Being, um. Free from development, okay.
Well, Southern now owns all of those, they plus.
That, did they just finish one?
They have finished, basically their contract with. So they, they have all of the Meek Creek Estates, the fifty-eight thousand and ninety-eight percent there and twenty-eight this year.
What about, um, was that Blenheim and?
Blenheim and Albemarle.
Okay.
That's the East Village.
So Blenheim is part of the East Village, yeah, okay. I don't know why I thought it was on the other side of the room.
Oh, well, I mean, it's, it is on, like, Scottville side, Blenheim.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, yeah. I have to let my sister know that I am in. Planning commission.
So, just to let you all know, I just sent a message to, um, Lincoln, I was wondering. I should know this, but this is my fifth week. Thinking, um, if there's parcels of lands, you know, I don't know that we have anything in our ordinance, do you probably know this? About data centers, and where.
Yeah.
Where do we wanna be as a town, because, you know, we're thinking that. You know, these parcels could be residential development, but who knows, they might decide, hey, you know what, we wanna big data center. And then all of a sudden, if we get a data center, they're gonna, you know, need the power to run it, water to run it, and. You know, we saw one of the counties that were pushing back on developments.
Yeah, I was actually gonna talk to Lincoln about that, because I did learn about that that's like a trending problem. And would be good to address, did you?
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah.
Good question, um, so I'll just mention that when Javier and I went down to Buckingham County to talk to the, uh, Mr. Carter, um. You know, the person that took over from Ms. Carter, the former, um, interim town, um, administrator. For Scottsville, um, we were talking to Mr. Carter and, and he kind of relayed to us that their biggest challenge at, at that time last year was solar farms.
So along the same vein, but that's kind of intense.
But if, if a developer in the northeast part of town, uh, didn't see a lot of potential and wanted to sit on their land, uh, and not do residential for a while. Who knows what they could do?
Yeah.
We have to look into that.
It's another thing that I kind of made mention of, and that is our, um, our SUPs. Um, they are wide open, and so Meek Creek Estates was decided on well before I showed up. And nothing has, I think they have one house on it.
None.
Yeah, so there was a developer who was going to purchase all that property. Um, and it fell from, uh, two thousand to nine, that was eight, nine happened.
So, we also need to look at that, it was really interesting, because in this class that I'm taking, they called them conditional.
Yes, I was just gonna ask.
And I was like, we don't. I don't think that we had that as part of our focus.
Right.
In the past, and I didn't know any different, and I'm sure, I mean, it's totally fine to have the SUPs be what they are. But I think that if we could talk about limit, time limits or, um, conditions.
Aren't there limits, you already?
Yeah, there should be. Like a review, yeah, you have like a review after, I think, is it like a year, eighteen months?
I mean, but isn't that, like, isn't there a law, isn't there something that, like, like you can't, like, like already in place, but?
Yeah, pretty much anything that falls outside of your, uh, not special.
Your.
By right, that's the word, uh, is then falls under the category of special use.
Okay.
Um, so that's kinda.
Permit, those only, you, only good for a certain amount of time, right?
Uh, depending on what the stipulations are put on.
Yeah.
So like, we as a body say, okay, this is for five years and then it comes up for review. And then like, if you have, let's say, there's a particular light that you absolutely hate, uh, that goes on the levy. You can say, this needs to go away from the special use to be reenacted.
Gotcha. So, anyway, I, I thought that we could talk about those kinds of things that might make sense for the future, we can review them and say. Okay, let's extend this.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, um, given the fact that we have no idea what's gonna happen with Meek Creek, I mean, they haven't done anything with it since they. Got the SUP, I don't know that they have any plans, but.
They, they actually rezoned and it's all planted.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, but is that still like?
So the special use permit or conditional use permit, it basically goes away then?
Yeah, it should go.
They got these seventy, and then all that's out the door.
Right, oh, okay, so after that.
Specialist, forget it, it's, um, Lumpkin's, as an example. Uh, they had a special use permit, I think, to have the hotel bar, the rooms. And when the next person bought it, he had to apply again because it went with the owner, not. Not the, um.
It went with the land.
Yeah, when Holland sold it. The special use permit went away and the fellow had to re.
Okay, so, well. I'm just saying that I'd like to, like to talk about that, I'm glad that everybody has something to bring to table on that, I guess.
So does that mean that, that the special use permit goes away because it changed hands?
He reap one, the, the current owner. I mean, that, that is not special use permit, there was completely rezoned.
Oh, I hope somebody had told me that.
Was that the rezoning back in oh eight, or had it been more recently rezoned?
Oh, no, it was back in somewhere eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, okay, that one.
Because it was RA, wasn't it always RA and it's just still on it?
The, the average lot of it is two acres.
But that's what RA is.
Right, so.
They don't have anything less than two acres in Meek Creek. So, I don't know if they rezoned it, or, I mean, it's still RA. It's still RA, it's just that they put these pla-.
I just barely remember, and you can ask wrong, he was, I think, on planning that.
I think we could probably look it up somewhere, don't you think?
It's probably in a pile of papers in the.
Well.
Yeah, that, that's one challenge, I'd, I'd, I'd say that, uh, you know, the, the paperwork is the, is, uh. Is really the challenge, the file keeping in the office, because, um. There could be a lot of other cases of that, uh, we just don't have records of anymore, yeah.
Well, I thi- I think that it would be a great project for, um, scanning.
And if, if the town was able to develop a file keeping system, more like a digital system, to keep track of, uh. Decisions on specific land parcels, I think that'd be very valuable, yeah.
Yes, awesome, yes.
Um, but about data centers.
Do you have a new?
No, not yet, but I played off the desk. And so now the office, and I'm like, oh, this is where our future, you know, person that answers the phone and files. It goes through all this paperwork, and we put it in, I said, there's too much paper, there's no reason that we can't scan this and.
Right, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So, sorry, I'll get off my seat, folks.
If, if I could just mention about data centers, uh, if you don't mind, I think that was a great question, um, so I, I pulled up the comprehensive plan. Um, there's a section about, um, what, uh. Land uses are proposed to change names, so this is something that Lawless wrote up last time that was never, uh, implemented yet. So his recommendation was to change light industrial and heavy industrial, uh, just industrial, cause the town only has really one. Area that's industrial, we all know that it's a tire factory, right? Um, but thinking outside the box, when you mentioned data centers, um, and reading the text here. The, the left is the current zoning and the right is, uh, potentially what we would want to implement, um. You know, basically, it's, it's removing the idea of heavy industry, so red is delete, basically. Um, but you could almost interpret industry to be a, a data center, so this might be one area we want to, uh, zoom in on. Um, if, if data centers are a concern, yeah. Just to highlight that, cause I think it's a, a good point, yeah.
Yeah, the solar, it's a solar farm to scan. Yeah, but I don't, I don't know the issues with data centers, I really don't, I know that it is an up and coming. Worried, but I don't know what they are.
Um, one of the things that I've read is it requires a lot of water for the cooling.
Okay.
Um, that's one of the main things, but beyond that, I could get back.
They, they also can make a lot of noise, um, and sap a lot of electricity. So a place next to a river that's zoned industrial might be really well suited and has cheap electricity compared to other areas.
Okay, I deem it. I think it's definitely worth a, a real discussion about that, and I can do some research and you all can advise, um. Just to find out what the issues are, and I think we're, we're looking at maybe wanting to, um. Make a decision about whether we need to protect that as something we don't want in the comp plan. Does that sound acceptable to you?
We want to encourage.
To add some to the comp plan?
Well, not up to me, but I think it's a good idea, um.
Okay.
But I, I can find some text, I'm sure, um, there is some available text from, uh, you know, different. Different organizations that, uh, promote, you know, uh. Zoning codes that prohibit solar or limit solar, uh, in different ways, so I could, I could look up some, uh, potential text. I could look up some po- potential text, uh, for data centers. Um, and again, nothing fancy, but just some basic text, and then maybe, uh, the, um, town lawyer could take a look also. To see if that, that text is acceptable, yeah.
I think.
Just to, at least it, it would be an SUP in that case, and then, then the planning commission and town council, of course, could take a closer look, it wouldn't be just a. Rubber stamp, uh, by right, damn, hearing me.
I think, um, we need to look at what Virginia, um, or the governor is promoting, I know when I was at ZQ. When, um, solar, a lot of solar projects were coming up. Um, they are like tough on environmental regulations or compliance, I was just saying. And, um, we were basically told, you know, like, just. You know, the governor wanted that development and they wanted us to review plans quickly and approve them and out the door they went.
Hmm.
So.
Okay, well.
I don't know what the current governor, but I would guess.
Like total development, they were.
It was like this whole, I hired new people within ZQ just to review them, because when we were reviewing them. I always say us old folks, because like two thousand. I'm like, that won't work, or, you know, they would not consider, for example, that when the solar panels are, you know, tilted a particular way. Underneath, so there's all this water runoff, and they weren't, the engineers were doing plans, they weren't taking that into consideration. For calculations for how much water runoff, so then there were problems. The studios and the downhill rock reuters, like, they were like, we told you.
It's the most unsatisfying.
Yeah, we're getting so bad, that's like.
Yeah, oh, wow. So, thank you all, um, I would like to talk about that next time as well, so can we add it to the agenda? Is that okay? Okay, great. Yeah. Okay. You still have the luck, or is, you know.
That was conservation easements, so let's.
Yeah. We're done, right?
Yeah.
I know I can't do anything unless I hear from someone.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Done, we are adjourned, thank you all so.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Waiting for her to say, do I hear a motion, and I was just gonna go with so move.